It's time to call the meeting order. Would you please stand and recite the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank all of you that are in attendance today. It's -- I'm glad to see a lot of faces here. And you took time out of your busy schedule to attend this meeting. All right. The next item is the adoption of the agenda. Gentlemen, have you had a chance to look at the agenda? Do you have any questions or concerns about it?
No, I'm fine.
I'm good.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Item number two, appointments. Planning Commission. We have two terms expired, one inside the city limits and one outside the city limits within three miles. And we do have an application. That application is for Brent Littleton, who requested he would like to serve in this position on the Planning Commission Board of Zoning Appeals for the City of Independence. Do you have any questions concerning Mr. Littleton? Either one?
No.
Okay. Do I have a motion to...
You make the appointment. We just...
Oh, okay. Okay, I'm making the appointment of Brent Littleton to serve on the Planning Commission. And he will fill the one outside the city limit within three mile position.
I'll second your motion.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next would be the Tree Board. And the Tree Board, we have Twyla J. Brooks Hawthorne. And she would like to serve on the Tree Board for the City of Independence. So I appoint Twyla J. Brooks Hawthorne to serve on the Tree Board. Do I have a motion?
You make the appointment.
No, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Okay.
You make the appointment.
I'm making the appointment for Twyla J. Brooks Hawthorne to serve on the Tree Board for the City of Independence. Excuse me.
I second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
You might specify which, I guess there were four available seats.
Yeah, we're now extending it. We've still got openings.
No, I'm getting as an appointment. Are there differences in the terms of the four available vacancies? They need to specify which vacancy this person takes. You might tell them, I don't know.
Okay, we have an expired position that will be a full term that they're not wanting to replace. So it would be a first full term on an unexpired term.
So this appointment would be the full term replacement. The two additionals are still open.
Yeah.
And then for those...
We have one that would serve if we can't find somebody. He said he will be reappointed. Otherwise, you can replace them. That was the second.
Are those terms staggered or will they be...
I believe they're staggered. I'll pull that ordinance and send it to you guys. Will that work?
Okay. That Planning Commission position, that was for a three-year term, correct?
Yes.
All right. Item number three, the Common Consent Agenda. Gentlemen, have you had a chance to look at the Common Consent Agenda? Do you have any concerns? Anything that you would want to discuss?
No, I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We're up to number four, public hearings. We have a public hearing to consider condemnation of 215 Earl Street as dangerous and unsafe. At this time, I'd like to open the hearing to the public. Don?
Yes. This is one that we've received numerous complaints about. It is our recommendation that we consider this for condemnation. I am not aware of any parties that will be here for that, but they may be. We've not received any contact from anybody regarding this.
Okay. Is there the owner or a representative of the owner in the audience that would like to address the commission? Okay. Anyone of the public that would have concerns about this particular address that would like to address the commission? Anyone? All right. I will close the hearing on this and open this up for commission. Questions?
Sure.
I don't have any questions concerning the property.
Nor I, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I don't either. I've looked at it the first time it came around, and it had a different address on it. And it's in pretty bad shape.
It had the correct address. We had the wrong address.
Okay. It did. Yeah, that's right. Okay. Well, with that, do I have a motion?
I move that 215 Earl Street be condemned as dangerous and unsafe.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item would be a public hearing to consider condemnation of 417 South Sixth Street as dangerous and unsafe. And I'll open this public hearing to the people in the audience. Don?
We've -- there's not been any repairs. There've been temporary bracing of the wall that was damaged during the rains in August. They have relocated to a different location. We haven't received any contact from them since the last meeting. It is our recommendation, staff's recommendation, that we move forward with condemnation and give them an opportunity to repair that should they want to do that.
All right. Is the property owner here? Is someone representing that address here in the audience tonight?
I drove to the new location today to try to meet with them to see if they were going to come to the meeting, but I wasn't able to contact anybody.
So they still live in Independence, though?
They still live in Independence. Yes, they do.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone in the audience, the public, that has some concerns about this address that would like to appear before the commission? All right. Donna, I did have a question on this. When this had come up before us previously, hadn't they indicated that they were going to proceed with some... Refresh my memory.
They were looking into the possibility of repairing it, but it's my understanding that they are purchasing another home in Independence.
Okay.
So...
All right.
That's the information I have. Now, I don't have that firsthand from them. That's what I've been told.
Okay.
Close the hearing. We'll open it for our discussion.
We'll close the hearing and open it up for commission discussion. Gary or Leonard, do you have any...
If the structure's been adequately supported, if the shoring is functioning and the structure isn't unsafe because of that, then, you know, I'm hesitant to go ahead and condemn it. Once we condemn it, then sale of the property becomes more difficult because no money can be secured.
Right. Now, it has temporary bracing in the basement. It's not been permanently repaired.
No, I understand. But if the temporary shoring is sufficient to carry the load, then there's no problem with a collapse. So, you know, we haven't contacted the owner. He hasn't contacted us. He is still available. I just hesitate to proceed with condemnation because it's basically a safe structure. Yeah, it's not the optimum for...
I mean, if you want to adjourn it for 30 or 60 days, I don't have any issue with that.
Gary?
I think that's great. If we want to try it for another 30 days and bring it up again, or 60 days.
I'd like to give him, you know, I'm agreeable to give him another 30 days to try to see what they want to do with this.
Since he did respond as soon as a problem developed and did satisfactorily support the structure, you know, I don't see the urgency to have it removed or proceed with condemnation.
Okay. I'm inclined to agree with that. Like I said, they did make the temporary bracing repairs to stabilize that part of the house. And it looks like it can be salvageable. So would we extend this out for another 30 days?
Yeah. We're agreeable to that.
Okay, 30 days would be February 28? February 28? 28? Okay. Okay. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we adjourn the hearing for 30 days and reschedule the hearing for February 28.
I'll second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. The next item, C, public hearing to consider condemnation of 905 West Sycamore as dangerous and unsafe. I open up for a public hearing.
Yeah, we've been contacted by the owners a couple of months ago. He travels a lot. He's trying to be here sometime in January to walk through the property with me and to finalize everything that will need to be done on this. They have worked towards getting the windows repaired, getting it cleaned out. And, I mean, they are, they seem, they're always agreeable. And I don't have any problem with what they're doing at this point. So we are recommending that we adjourn for 60 days to give them an opportunity to come here personally and meet with me and walk through the property again.
All right. I know the owners live in Wyoming.
Yeah.
Is there anyone here in the public that's familiar with that property that would like to address the commission? All right. And then I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, do you have any questions, any concerns you want to bring up concerning this property?
It did look like they were trying to make an effort building secure.
Yeah.
It seemed like the trash had been removed from inside.
And if we can get a property that can get turned around and add to our stock, then we're agreeable to do that. We have a few that we can, that we could take the place in the lineup if we don't condemn this.
All right. Don, thank you. Do I have a motion?
I move to adjourn the public hearing for 905 West Sycamore Street to March 28, 2019, at 5:30 p.m.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item D, public hearing to consider condemnation of 1701 North 10th Street, Building Number Four, as dangerous and unsafe. I open the meeting up for a public hearing.
So I have talked to them this week. I've talked to their regional vice president over construction. And I've talked to the recently appointed regional manager that was appointed last week. So they have, the insurance company's been out, inspected, done their estimate. They've had contractors come out to give them estimates. This is also involved with the USDA. So the estimates are now with rural development, which is kind of at a standstill due to the government shutdown. So they are working to get this done. I have reminded the manager that the tarp that they placed over there is kind of tattered. And when it rains and snows, it's getting in there, and it's not helping the condition of the building. So they've told me that they will be working on getting that taken care of. So it's our recommendation that we adjourn for 60 days. If the federal government is back to functioning then and they can get that cleared, we have every confidence that it's their intent to repair it and to... Because they're losing income on it as it sits not being rented. So it's certainly been their intent to repair it.
All right. Thank you, Don. Are there any concerns from the public concerning this address, this property? All right. Then I will close the hearing on 1701 North 10th Street, Building Number Four. Do I have a motion on this? Oh, excuse me. Do you guys have any other concerns about this property?
Were the photographs recent?
Those were taken, those are the ones taken after the fire. So they've made attempts to board up, try to board up the stairs, try to board up the windows. They put temporary framing to put a tarp over it. But I think it's going on a little longer than they anticipated. So the tarp's kind of tattered. They need to put some more of the plywood up that they've used to board it up.
Gary?
I don't have anything.
Leonard, that's all? Okay.
No questions.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Do I have a motion?
I move to adjourn the public hearing for 1701 North 10th Street, Building Four, to March 28, 2019, at 5:30 p.m.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number five, items for commission action. Thank you, Don. Consider modified recommendation from the Planning Commission to adopt an ordinance implementing text amendments to the Code of the City of Independence, Kansas, specifically Appendix B, zoning code relating to off-street parking requirements.
Gentlemen, we had the work session on the 15th. And I'll go through this quickly. What I did is I pulled out of the sections that didn't seem to be any disagreement on, that everybody kind of agreed on. And those had to do with the definitions for the ADA and the modified definition for the parking space off-street and the surface drives that must be paved, which actually is no change to how they currently are. The modification of Section 705.5, minimum parking space dimensions as it relates to ADA, the striping required and the ADA accessibility and the modification on the surface material, the portion that says that the exception to the hard surfacing does not allow for the removal and replacement of an existing hard surface with a non-hard surface. There didn't seem to be any disagreement with that. And that ADA parking accessible paths must be hard-surfaced. And there didn't seem to be any disagreement with those sections. And these are just those where they appeared in those. These are the sections that seemed to be, didn't seem to be any disagreement on that or any major issues arise. And then these are the ones that there were some discussion on, which was the surface material added exception to allow materials other than hard surface for non-ADA parking and allow expansion of non-hard surface parking areas that are grandfathered in. And concerns were brought up on aesthetics, maintenance, and enforcement. And possible solutions were brought up that would require ADA and visitor parking to be paved and would require any areas that were not hard-surfaced to be behind the facility and screened. Also brought up was to consider limiting the size of non-hard surface parking. And then the section allow expansion of hard-surface parking area with non-hard surface for up to two years, then it must be hard-surfaced or removed. Concerns were brought up on how this would be enforced. And a solution was brought up by the city attorney regarding daily fines until the parking lot is brought into compliance. The next section, non-ADA off-street parking areas shall be graded, paved, or otherwise improved with an all-weather dustless material that is contained in such a manner as to not allow surface material to wash off during heavy rains and so drained as to avoid flow of water across sidewalks. And concerns were raised about being able to contain the gravel and the chemical utilized to maintain the dustless condition could cause clumped dust to be tracked into facilities and vehicles. And possible solutions were discussed about requiring the ADA and visitor parking to be hard-surfaced and employee parking would be screened and contained behind the building. And any issues with the dustless requirement would be up to the business to address. And then I know they brought up an example on Horizon Arrow Structures. So I did pull a few pictures from that. And this is the facility. Actually, the front is hard-surface. They've got, I don't know how large that is exactly, but they've got a fairly large hard-surface area in front of the facility and, which is right here. And then, but it looks like the rest of it is probably not hard-surface in these other areas. And then this is just a front view of the paved part in the front of the facility. And then in addition to that, I also spoke to Ryan Fulmer with the City of Chanute. And he said they didn't really have a good definition of an improved surface. And so, you know, they kind of interpreted it to mean it could provide, you know, gravel if it's maintained and not has a lot of dust and things. And he did say Horizon was annexed into the city limits, but that facility is out by itself. It's not really by anything. It's kind of by their airport. And then I also contacted McPherson because it was brought up. And they said that in their code, it says gravel parking areas are permitted in industrial districts. And I did email them. And I had copies of both the emails correspondence and your packets for you guys to review. And then I talked to Trish. And actually, I see she just sent me another email, but I haven't had a chance to look at it. But the first email said that she agreed with allowing nondust generating porous surface areas for parking she felt were reasonable. And she did, on the phone, indicate to me that sometimes that is a cost factor with the smaller businesses and industries, small industry startups. And then I had some possible suggestions that addressed some of the areas of concern. And the blue areas are the ones that I just, I was kind of playing with it today. In M1 and M2 districts, other material may be substituted in lieu of concrete, asphalt concrete, or asphalt double-sealed surfaces for non-ADA employee off-street parking spaces and loading zones as long as such areas are located behind the facility and are screened from public view. And then that next part I didn't change. If a business currently has a hard-surface parking lot and needs to expand that parking area, they can expand it using the non-hard surface parking material for up to two years, at which time they will need to hard-surface to expand a parking area, meaning the surface material requirements and/or remove to expand a parking area. And then I added, the exceptions do not apply to visitor parking and the required ADA parking in any other parking or loading zones located in front of the facility. The exceptions only apply to new or expanded parking areas and do not allow for the removal and replacement of existing concrete, asphalt concrete, or asphalt double-sealed surfaces with other material. That wasn't modified. The exceptions shall meet the following requirements. I took the non-ADA because it was addressed up above, and it was kind of redundant there. That's the only thing I changed on that. Off-street parking areas shall be graded, paved, or otherwise improved with an all-weather dustless material that is contained in such a manner as to not allow surface material to wash off during heavy rains and so drained as to avoid flow of water across sidewalks. ADA compliant parking and accessible paths to an entrance to the facility served by off-street parking shall be hard-surfaced, which was in the original recommendation. And if you are interested in possibly doing some modifications, if you wanted to give direction to the Planning Commission, we could send it back again. Or you guys could just leave it how it is or maybe make the changes that everybody was agreeable to. It's really the balls in your court to do what you desire.
All right.
And I do have copies of those. Those three slides with the changes on the back ones. I know that's really hard to read. And we have a few planning commissioners here. I know Shell's here. I don't know if we have any others. Oh, we got Brent Littleton, our brand-new one. He's here.
All right, gentlemen. What's your thoughts on this?
Well, my thought is to leave it as it is. Hard surface, no gravel. I don't think we're gaining anything. You know, our purpose of the P and Z is land use. And we're talking about other things that go beyond that. And in the bottom line, the hard surface is going to cause us less headache and problems in the long run. It's a cost factor of doing business. We can't modify every code to make it more economically beneficial or to soften the cost of development. You know, there's always different things. No matter what business you are, you've got costs that affect your construction in the long term when we look at the paved parking areas. They provide the city the least amount of problems. Even, you know, looking at the ADA option, even though the ADA does allow gravel, that's an inferior surface and causes problems for parking over a hard surface. So the ADA has just happened to set a minimum standard for that area with paved surface. It provides no additional burden or hardship for the individual using the area. In fact, makes it better. So, you know, I think we've looked at it and it just becomes more confusing and more difficult. The simplest is just keep the surface paved like the ordinance reads. Because, you know, where do you draw the line now? We do light industrial. Now, does commercial want us to look at their paving restrictions? They're off-street. Let's eliminate off-street parking. So, you know, where does it end? I think the best is what we've got. You look at other towns overall, you know, even during our meeting. City manager confirmed that the cities he was associated with, the parkings was required to be paved. So, you know, I feel we should just leave the ordinance as it is.
All right, Leonard, thank you. Gary? Your concerns about this?
It's such a tough issue. I have a huge amount of respect for Commissioner Koflish, but I also am always jealous of the huge industrial boom that is McPherson. And I know there's a million factors that go into that. But it seems true that if you're going to build, if you're a small facility, a small industrial facility, and you're going to build a new facility, you're not going to build in Independence because the paving is so expensive. You're going to build outside the city limit somewhere or another, you know, in the county or another town. And so I think my inclination right now is to at least consider allowing some form of this, you know, so that a drive that connects to our street maybe has to be paved or something like that so we don't have asphalt or gravel washing off into our streets. And I kind of like the idea of, you know, parking in the front of the building for visitors maybe and then parking behind the building that's out of sight or screened in some way, maybe gravel would be acceptable. I think during our work session with the Planning Commission, I think they made some good points that it's, we're just not seeing any industrial development here to speak of. And perhaps this is one deterrent that we could soften somewhat.
All right, Gary, thank you. I had the opportunity to visit Chanute here last weekend. I didn't tour any of their industrial park. But I did, I was on South Santa Fe, and I got to see some of the commercial parking. And it was kind of hodgepodge of a variety of parking. There were some that the entire facility was concrete-based. There was one facility that was not propane tanks, but the cylinder type. And they had, their driveway was concrete, but the rest of the parking in front of the building and to the side of the building was all gravel. And that gravel was continually washing out into the street. You know, we have gravel that gets out into the street now. A lot of it's from the alleys that washes out and ends up in the street from our temporary repairs on our city streets where we've filled with rock or asphalt until we can come back and make a permanent repair. So we have a lot of that now. Unlike Craig's comment at the last meeting about, Craig has been in a lot of areas of the country, from the east to the central to the west part of the country. And, you know, that was never brought up as a factor as far as business relocating or coming into any of the areas that he's served. In Kelly's point, she made it that if you make exceptions to this, then at that point, you open the door to who are you going to approve for this? Who are you not going to approve for this? And I also looked at some of the other towns besides McPherson and Chanute. And I also looked at some of the other towns besides McPherson and Shunut is what she had sent us. I looked at Arkansas City and I looked at Pittsburgh. And there was another town. I can't think of it right off the bat. But they have all stated and stayed with the hard surface. I understand why we would want to do everything possible to encourage industry to come to not only Independence but to the county. We could certainly use the jobs. But there are so many factors that play into that. You know, McPherson, they own their own utility. They make money off that. They have that external source of funding to where they can make allowances. They can employ more people. They have that constant revenue. And they have some of the lowest rates in the state of Kansas for electricity. There's so many factors that go into this. But one thing they do have in common is that they were all pushing that that the surfaces should be and should be retained as a hard surface. And I'm inclined to think that we need to stay with that. That's my own personal feeling on this. I even talked to the last, and not the last city manager, the previous city manager to the last one. And I had a long conversation with him on this too. But there was a reason why, when they drew this up, that they wanted it to be a hard surface. And that was his contention also. So that's kind of where I'm leaning at this point. So I know these are exceptions that have come up where we're trying to modify this. But it seems like we're trying to modify something toward an economic development when basically we're, should be deciding whether this is something that's a requirement. Is it something that's going to benefit the city and the community as a whole overall? And that's what I am looking at as far as that concerns. So, gentlemen.
And just something that I would like to notice. The exception, the vehicle storage lots for the overnight storage of long-term warehousing of vehicles under one ownership is an exception that was already there. And that is not limited to any zone. So you could have, and I don't know if you want to look at that or not, but I did want to bring that to your attention. That's something that I don't, I even asked Paul when he was in the other day and he doesn't remember why that's there. But we have had some in zones, you know, commercial zones or like rental car places where they can have the gravel lots now because of that exception. And so I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that that is there. And just so that you're aware of that. So if you do see a gravel lot going in, if that's not modified and it fits that definition, that's why.
Okay, thank you, Kelly. So, gentlemen, we have a couple of options here.
What I'd recommend, we just table it and leave it like it is.
Okay, take no action. All right. So then that's what we'll do. We'll table that and take no action on that.
I don't have the zoning and state statute from me, but when it comes up to you from the planning commission with the recommendation, is there a requirement that if you take no action, their recommendation takes effect? I think it'd be safer if you're inclined not to go with the recommendation, to make a motion to not go with it and just leave things as they are. I can't remember what that statute says sitting here right now. I'd feel bad if you tabled it and took no action and the statute said you failed to act.
Say that goes to take action.
I don't know if that's on your intent.
So you would suggest that we move to reject it? Make a motion to reject their recommendation?
Yeah, so it's clear.
I make a motion that we reject the action recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission and leave the ordinances as they currently exist.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. The next item, consider proclaiming April 29th, 2018, and April 27th, 2019 as Arbor Day.
I am Leslie Fox from the Independence Tree Board. And we ask you to proclaim April 29th, 2018, and April 27th, 2019 as Arbor Day. We're going to have a grand Arbor Day celebration this year on April 27th, 2019. And we did have a really grand Arbor Day celebration on April 29th, 2018. This has been a learning process. We didn't realize that we needed to proclaim Arbor Day every year. So we need to, for Tim McDonald from Tree City USA, ask if we could please go ahead and proclaim last year's as well.
Do it in arrears.
All right, thank you. When I read that, I thought, I did a double take because I was thinking I was, something didn't look right when I read that.
No, I know. It's a little funny. But we'll come back again next spring and have you do it for 2020.
We're used to doing things that are a little funny.
We could just declare it now, too.
Right? We could keep going.
Let's get the next five years.
Okay, so, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so do we have a motion to proclaim April 29th, 2018, and April 27th, 2019 as Arbor Day in Independence?
So move.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now at this time, I'm to read this proclamation. Is that necessary? Okay, I'll go ahead. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting, heating, and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic fatality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Louis C. Sissy, Mayor of the City of Independence, do hereby proclaim April 29th, 2018, and April 27th, 2019 as Arbor Day in the City of Independence. And I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations.
Spiritual renewing, huh?
Yes.
Thanks, Leslie. Have we got our signs up yet?
Okay, next on the agenda is considering authorizing staff to set the date to receive bids for removal of 606 Fountain. Don?
So this had already been approved to go out to bid. So the owner had come to the meeting and wanted an extension to reconsider this. He visited my office yesterday. Says, "I do not have any new information for you, but will reiterate, one, I have done substantial yard cleanup. Two," this is an email that he sent me today. "Two, have had two different contractors consider the work proposal. Do not have an agreement yet. Three, talked with Rick South of South Roofing today, who said by tomorrow he will have a written bid for me on the roof. Four, one of my sons is moving back to Kansas from California. And the plan at this point is to repair or restore the home for him to live in. He will then be in the area to work on the other properties. Five, we are selling the Coffeyville properties. And we use some of this capital to reinvest in Independence. I do request a deferral of the discussion until the next meeting, which as I understand will be the 28th of February. I have already placed this on my calendar. Thank you sincerely, Paul." So we have sent out the bids. The bids will be sealed about a week before the next commission, the next commission meeting. If that's a K-State fight song, I'm not standing for that.
Barry, sorry.
So the bids will come back a week before the second commission meeting of February. At that time, we will present those to you for your consideration. He could come at that time at the meeting and tell you what his plans are for that, to see if you want to remove those bids. That's one of the proposals that we have for this. It's already been approved to go out for bid. And you'll have to accept them. That will give him time to present his plans to you to see if you want to reconsider and remove that from the package that we've sent out for bid. We've discussed that and we feel like that's a reasonable proposal at that time.
Well, the consider placing back on the demolition list, that's not what we're being asked to do. That's already been done?
Yes, that's already, it's already been on the, it was already on the demolition list. He just wanted to see if it would be.
I understood, maybe I heard wrong, that you've issued a list of structures to be bid on for removal.
Right.
And this is in that package?
That is in that package, yes.
Okay, so then you're really not asking us to put it back on the list because it's already on the list?
It's already on the list. I'm just saying that he can come before the next mission, commission meeting when we present that bid proposal to you to see if you want to remove it from consideration.
That part makes sense to me. So I'm not even sure why we're considering setting a date to receive bids when it sounds like it's already.
We've already. He just asked for an adjournment last time. And we said he has 30 days to see what he could do and then we would bring it up before you. But it was already, it was already approved to send out for bid.
Right.
So this item on the agenda is irrelevant?
Yes, just say it.
Yes.
Okay.
I guess I'm confused if we meet and agree to take it off, then it probably shouldn't be put back on unless we agree to put it on.
Yeah, I mean, it's already been approved to go out for bid. He just wanted to.
Approved to take it off.
Yeah, we didn't approve to take it off. You didn't approve to take it off the last time that he spoke about it. He just wanted to have some time to show you that he was going to do something with the property, so.
So that's why we put it on the agenda tonight?
That's why we put it on the agenda tonight. And he's not able to be here tonight to discuss this.
So with the bid process then, it will come to the commission to approve the bids?
Bids will come to the commission to approve. At that time, if you want to remove it, you can remove it at that time. That will come at the second commission meeting in February.
And at that time, he will be present to attend that particular meeting?
He says he has it on his calendar to attend.
Okay. So do we?
Well, really, we can't do anything. At first, we removed it.
Right.
We decided he was going to, so we took it out, being bid to remove. But it was put back on the list. So we have no action. We have no.
I don't think we removed it last time. We just told him he could come to discuss to see if.
I thought we, I remembered we took it off. So I don't, you know, this is nothing for us to do.
Okay.
Doesn't even need to be on the agenda.
Okay, works for me. D, consider setting the date of March 28th, 2019 for a public hearing to consider condemnation of the structures located at 208 North 17th Street as dangerous and unsafe. Okay, and I open this for public hearing?
Yeah.
No.
No, this is the first time this has come up, this address?
We're going to set the public hearing for it.
Oh, excuse me. Okay, sorry. Don, go ahead.
Yeah, there was an electrical fire at this location. Gas meter's been pulled, electric meter's been pulled. The wiring that was in there is not in good shape and is damaged. So we certainly recommend that we set the date for March 28th, 2019 to consider condemnation of 208 North 17th Street.
What's the extent of structural damage in the house?
Oh, there's damage in the attic and the rafters. So there's significant damage in the structure.
Is, I know, we've had fires in different structures and they weren't condemned because the percentage of damage didn't exceed, what was it, was it 25, 75%?
Right. There's not a whole lot of value in this structure. So it's going to exceed 70% of the value of the structure.
Was anyone in the structure at the time of the fire?
Yes, people were living there at the time.
Have you had contact with them, what their intents of the structure?
I talked with the mother and they were buying it on contract. So their intent is not to go back in there is what she had told me after the fire.
So just a kind of curious question. If they were buying it on contract, then who will be the owner that we serve notice to? Will it be them or will it be the actual, because their name wouldn't be on the.
We've sent notice to the owner that's listed with the county.
Okay. It's kind of an interesting situation there. It's kind of.
Contract, the owner. The owner that he's selling it on contract.
Yeah.
If the buyers file what's called an affidavit of equitable interest with the registered deeds, then at the county offices, it'll show both of them as having some degree of ownership. So in that case, you send it to both. But if they didn't, if the owner, you see this quite often on inexpensive houses. The owner did a self-help contract. They didn't do title work, didn't use a closing agent, just a cash deal. And the buyer didn't file the affidavit, then the owner's the only one that's going to get notice.
Okay, interesting.
Gary, anything? Anything else on this? Okay, do I have a motion?
I move to set the date of March 28th, 2019 at 5:30 PM for a public hearing to consider condemnation of the fire-damaged structure at 28 North 17th.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Hey, before Don gets away, I know this is on the agenda. The fire right there by the Taco Bell?
Mm-hmm.
Is that, I don't know, I've driven by there lately. What's the status of that one?
That property is gone and.
It's gone?
It's gone. Trees are gone, lots cleared. Should be completed, should have completed it today or almost completed.
Wonderful, thank you. I was hoping that was the case.
Yep, that's gone.
All right, thank you, Don. All right, item E. Consider awarding the low bid to Jeff Graham Construction Incorporated for 2018 ADA sidewalk and ramp improvement, phase four. Sean? Sean? Dave? Sorry.
Mayor, we're very pleased to present to you tonight a low bid of $487,199.50. I have Sean Turner here, who done all the proposal and the work for us, and I'm sure you may have some questions for him on that, so I will let him. Also present is Mr. Kaiser with the church. I did tell him it wasn't crucial that we did an agreement tonight, if he needed some more time, or we needed, but he is present here if, if he wishes to, or if you wish to speak to him, sir.
All right.
Sean?
Thank you. This bid had a base bid with a number of alternates. The base bid project is 10th Street, and that basically replaces all the ramps on 10th Street, plus replaces, um, in spot repairs, an amount of this sidewalk. It's about 1,600 running feet of the sidewalk. There's an alternate to that, to replace all of the sidewalk on 10th Street, but it wasn't considered by the staff. It was an additional $150,000, so that is not in what's recommended. Then the additive one is Oak Street Improvements, which is near the high school, and gets a $66,331.65. Additive two is the Cypress and Irving, or the, or the church project. That is $38,924.05. Additive three is the Eighth and Main Street Improvements, and I'll stop reading the numbers unless you want me to. But additive four is Annie Mae Improvements. Additive five is the Riverside Park Improvements. Additive six is the Fifth Street Stadium Improvements. Added at seven is the Fifth Street Cottonwood to Myrtle Improvements. So, all of those together totals the amount David did previously, or is, is on the council, the commission's agenda tonight for approval.
How many contractors were contacted to?
We, we advertised, you know, locally and in the plan rooms, and there were three plan holders. And we contacted those, and one of the other ones that was a plan owner was B&amp;B, who constructed a portion of Peter Pan. And I tried very hard to talk them into offering a bid, but we could still only receive the one bid.
And you've worked with this firm before?
Yes, we have. Yes, we have Jeff Graham, that are located in Coffeyville, and we have worked with them before. And we recommended them as the lowest responsive, responsible bids.
And was this within your budget figures for this work?
It, it was, yes.
I had a question on the Oak Street. Again, uh, the drawing was included in the packet. We've got a, a concrete walk on the north side of Oak Street that goes from the corner to a, a lot, a sidewalk close to the parking lot. That's on school property, then, looks like a portion coming to a curb cut at the parking lot entrance.
Correct.
Then we've got another portion of sidewalk on the other side with a curb ramp, and a new sidewalk that goes up to the building.
Correct. And I, I, I think, not to preempt your question, but we, those improvements that are off city right-of-way, we did have a, a meeting with the school, several meetings with the school, and discussed the school paying for those. And the, the amount of that is $23,186.75.
You know, even the, the sidewalk paralleling Oak Street on the north side.
That, that is included in that dollar amount.
Okay. Then, Oak Street was 66, 331, 65.
Correct.
Where's the other? Is there more to the work on Oak Street than on this one drawing?
Yes, yes, there is.
Okay.
It continues on, um-
East?
Yes.
Okay.
Continues on east.
Okay. Yeah, 'cause this, uh, the drawing here, it looks more, you know, we're, we're responsible for public sidewalks and street crossings. But when you look at the drawing, the accessible route from the high school to the facility across, uh, south of Oak, that's all owner-related work. And it's not really something that we should be involved, so, uh-
Yes, I believe that was staff's conclusion as well, and it, it was kind of a long process to, with some, uh, negotiations and modifications to plans to come, to come back with what we have, so.
Are they covering engineering costs too?
We have not, I don't believe that's been discussed with them.
'Cause it, it does seem to be a beneficial proj, project to, uh, uh, another party. Okay. That was my concern when I saw the, the drawing, and there wasn't the additional information. Kind of on the same, same note, I, in the RCA, it listed the four other locations, uh, number four, the middle school bus stop. Again, that would appear to be a land use, not a city responsibility.
And we, uh, you know, we're assisting the city with updating portions of the, um, transition plan too. And yeah, I believe the, the staff use that the same way. It's only improvements on city right-of-way that will be done, when, when they're referred to as the bus stops.
And even, in, in that case, if it's mid-block, we're still, ours is a crossing. We're not, we're not required to provide handicap ramps, other than at that, for a, a, a particular business or, or use, so.
Yeah, we, we did look at the middle school, and it was pretty simple, what the city had to do. I, I don't have a dollar amount on that, but what we view as needing to be done was, was pretty simple, so.
Yeah, I don't think we should pay anything, particularly for a bus stop. You know, at the corners, that's our responsibility, but their use of, of in-between our corners, that's theirs. Same as a driveway crossing the sidewalk.
This is-
They won't put a lot in.
Right there on the, it's gonna be on the, get my directions correct, Leonard, west side, on 10th Street. It's where the handicap bus unloads, and it comes, that's the ADA entry into the middle school, and that handicap bus stops right there on 10th. And puts the door down on, beyond the sidewalk. So, that's why I considered it, but if you think that sidewalk there is school, we'll go back and talk to them.
Yeah, I, because it's their bus.
Yeah.
It's not a city-owned, and not a public entity, and, um, you know, we're just, you know, we gotta, we gotta state strictly with our, our use, or then we get carried into, you know, we're not required to provide handicap for businesses and, and other entities. And that's their service, so.
Okay.
I think those is, that's related.
Okay. Yeah, we'll take that one off then.
To the school.
I'll let Restino.
The other three, looking at them, are those mainly repairs of damaged curb entrances?
Those are Sean and, uh, I'll let Sean speak to it. Eighth and Main, the northeast corner, we received a complaint. That is, uh, from a person in a wheelchair that got knocked out because of that, and I think, I'll let you speak to that, Sean, you thought?
Yeah, that, that one, it looked like there is some just dilapidated sidewalk and curbing, and, and it'd be a pretty easy repair or fix of dilapidated conditions.
The brick have shifted?
Yes.
Quite a bit there, and also, the, the northwest corner of Myrtle, Penn and Myrtle, is that the same condition?
Yeah, again, and the person, those lips, and you saw where I put some paint, somebody hit that, got, fell out of the chair, and they made the complaint. So, that's why I put that there, to see if we could address that. And then Ninth and Sycamore, uh, a gentleman, or a truck has cut the corner there on the, beyond the northwest corner, and has broke that all out there. And, uh, that's why that one's there.
Another maintenance.
Another, yes. So, I don't, Sean kind of looked at, we don't anticipate that one. There's a little bit of a hill there to be-
Yeah, I think those all are gonna be pretty simple ramps. I don't think they're gonna be a huge amount of money to fix.
Yeah. So, at Penn and Myrtle, that's just our brick paver area, 'cause there's a-
It's actually back on the concrete, Leonard, where they hit the lip and came out of the chair, where they made the complaint. And there's like a, it's kind of, to me, looked like s, four squares that are all offset there. But you are correct, the bricks are a mess too there, but we may be able to handle that.
See, along Myrtle, adjacent to the professional building, you go west, before you get to the door, there's a, a control joint that the slabs have shifted, and it's, the edge is painted yellow.
Yeah.
And that's what I was trying to identify. Are you addressing that crack? Because the brick have shifted in the, the decorative brick paver area too, that, you know, there's trip hazards all along those.
That whole area probably, I, Sean's aware of it. I haven't, we haven't had time to go down, and him puts a figure to it.
And that's something, with the change order, it'll come back to the commission with a little clearer, um, you know, scope and cost. Yeah, these are just complaints that have been received by the city.
Yeah, well, that's what I was wondering, i- if it's related to maintenance, and, you know, it's always good to see the base bid come in under estimate, but when you start putting things in, and you're looking at other work, sometimes there's, it's better to just make a separate project to pick up those items, uh, instead of just try to spend all the money that was budgeted. And, uh, looking at the, the areas, 'cause at the, uh, Eighth and Main corner, there's curb deterioration too, that's broke off. Is that part of the repair? Or, you know, where's our limit to what we're gonna do across the street, the same intersection, there's a section of concrete curb that's come out. And it was, you know, without, with just these locations, I was trying to get an idea of the scope of the work.
These are based, I just gave you, Leonard, these are actual complaints that I have to keep on file, and that's why I put them here.
Yeah, but, you know, when we're looking for us, if we had those complaints that we could see.
Okay.
'Cause you're asking us to approve the work on this, and without the description of the work, without cost estimates, where we're gonna go.
We, uh, I, we will bring you change orders, and I'll, I will make sure, we will do nothing, other than the $487,199.
When I saw the, the maintenance there, you know, we've got the, the section of sidewalk, uh, Sixth and Main on the south side. So, at some point, you pick up enough little pieces here and there, instead of doing change orders, do a project that you get the sidewalk and address more issues to make a separate project, and just kind of jumping and doing a little. That's why I was trying to see where we were going, and what the intent, intent was on these items, and, you know, the, the brick pavers, particularly at the Eighth and, uh, Main intersection, that's, you know, that's beyond-
Right.
Necessary to repair. It should have been done a long time ago. And then, you know, the scope of the work, are you dealing with concrete? Well, then, pick up some other, but you're just talking about mainly taking the brick up, new sand bed, and laying them down.
We really don't have a defined scope on any of those change order items yet. It's just, I think David just pointing out, he, he was going to be bringing you the change orders, so, um, we really don't have a, have a defined scope or unit price yet, or a price.
Okay.
I think really all that is intended is, we're, uh, we recommending the award of the $487,199.50, and I guess kind of a heads up, we're looking at those complaints as possible change orders. And if, should have rather put those in another project, there's really not any complaints from us. It's just really how you want, how you would want us to address those.
But when I read it, it, it was like, we're under bu, budget, and we can, we got these complaints, so we're just gonna look for, approve the, approval of the bid, and then, we're gonna add these in to it too. So, that's where it was a little-
Sure.
Little, you know, a little confusing, just, you know, if we're gonna approve, I just wanted to know for sure. But, so you're just asking us to approve the, the base bid at this time? Okay?
Correct.
Thank you.
Gary? Okay. Thank you, Leonard.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know if Mr. Kaiser from the church would like to address you or not.
Okay. Yes.
Larry, how are you?
All right, thank you.
Good to see you.
I do appreciate being able to address the commission, and, um, at this point, we have very few questions. Um, perhaps, uh, we should spend more time with Mr. Turner to have a elevation view. A top view of what we have has been shared with us, and I don't, I think I understand that, but I don't know if I could, um, articulate what it's supposed to look like to all the church folk. So, that's my only question. And then, follow-up on that, um, our share of the cost to, um, help facilitate this to go forward, we don't have particulars on how we might want to, um, pay the city. It has been suggested to us that either lump sum, or we could spread it out perhaps over some time. So, um, I didn't know how we might be able to address that. So, that's the, uh, two main questions that I have at this time.
I don't remember what the amount was.
Was that five, was that $5,000?
It's at 5,000, yes, sir.
Yeah, not to exceed 5,000.
Okay.
To answer your first question, yes, I'll be glad to meet with you and, and the church to, to review the plans. Thank you.
In the past, when there's a question on payment, they- My experience is the city clerk could just make sure it got paid in a fairly timely fashion, if it needed to be, or a little time, depending on the circumstances. I think city clerks in the past have done that. I don't know that you have to approve a specific plan, just for city's-
Well, here, in the agreement, compensation says the church will pay the city a cost of ADA improvements to the property, not to exceed 5,000, to be paid in one lump sum, or in five equal payment, equal installments over a five-year period, as mutually agreed to the parties. So, we've got a basis to start from, so if, uh, those are not agreeable, then couldn't we do an amendment to the agreement, whatever the city clerk and legal counsel and the church work out?
Yes.
Since it's already stated in the agreement, we probably should modify it, so.
Perhaps it'd be spelled out more definite, so we have a starting date, finish date, and all that. Outside of that, we have no other questions. And thank you for your help on getting it done.
So, who's gonna contact the work? Or Larry, are you gonna contact? Jeff, do you want him to contact you? Do you want him to contact city clerk?
Number one, I don't have the final amount. It's not to exceed 5,000. So, once I get the final amount, I can do the five installments and set up dates. I don't know when the work's gonna be done. So, I mean, I can't set a date. I could set a date of payment for tomorrow, but that wouldn't work, I don't think. So, I, I don't have the information I need to do anything at this point. I think we'll work with them.
So, with the church, their work at that intersection was $38,925, is that correct?
Correct.
And 5 cents, of course. I'll throw in the nickel. But their part is only gonna be 5,000, correct? So, okay.
And that's what's always been discussed verbally.
Okay. So, that's- So that's. Something that Sean, you'll be able to give him information about the start date of construction and schedule?
Yes, we uh, we'll have a pre-construction conference. If the commission awards the. Project, then we'll have a pre-construction conference that'll probably be in three or four weeks. And then at that time, the contractor will set a start date and we can invite you to pre-construction conference if you'd like and then we can. Get an estimated date of when they'll be working on it.
And normally with the contractor's pay request, he's not going to be given any funds until that work is. Either progressed or completed, so. Of course, they wouldn't be expected to be billed until, well, the, the way you've got the contract written out, it's based upon. Square yards, so once the work is done, that's when you'll determine the final cost of.
Correct, like, yeah, if we don't hit any snags, it could go up or down, not, I don't anticipate a lot. Their maximum amount is five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And uh, yeah, when that's fine, though, it'll take construction to be complete before that is finalized.
So that, it's gonna be a while before the church would need to pay, I'm wondering.
And then once the project will be done and you get a final number and then we'd be able to know if you can get around five thousand or a little less.
Uh, we, we are prepared if necessary to help with a down payment and that sort of thing. Um, then I thought if it would, not in the way of a. Uh, perhaps property tax, but not, but not different such as specials. If we had a monthly payment added to the um, water bill. But I don't know if we could do anything like that or write an agreement of, of any sort of that nature. Or if you just wanted to do an yearly uh, payment, we could do that too.
I think that's something you guys could work out with the city clerk and he can.
Okay, very good.
Only reason I could see coming back to you is if the work on their property exceeded significantly the five thousand. Based upon your comments about not paying for the school district stuff, you might have an issue with coin considerably higher than five thousand. That's the only problem I could see.
But then are in agreement, we told them that we would do it and not exceed five thousand also. So that's why you're there.
I drew that agreement in August and it's still not signed. It's been there.
Yeah, I, I did run through kinda the unit prices that were on their property and were, were slightly under by five thousand dollars amounts. So I think we're good. I think we're gonna still run under the five thousand slightly.
Okay. Okay. So then you'll basically work it out with the church as far as the starting time and how long the project's gonna go and then. Determine what the final cost, what their final cost would be and then at that point, they will get with the city clerk and then. Work out the agreement to how they're gonna pay and whether it installments.
Yeah, once we get the, the contract, get the date set, get everything in motion, we'll get that final number then. Uh, if he wants annual installments, we'll bill him out annually for a five-year period. So we'll, we'll work with Larry and the church and get that resolved.
Okay. Okay, thank you Mike. All right, so at this time, what we're looking at. We're looking at a, an amount of four hundred and eighty-seven thousand one hundred and ninety-nine dollars and fifty cents, correct? Okay. So um, do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we award the contract for construction of the two thousand eighteen. ADA sidewalk and ramp phase four project to uh, Jeff Graham Construction Incorporated. In the amount of four hundred eighty-seven thousand one hundred ninety-nine dollars and fifty cents.
I'll second.
Hall in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item F, consider modifying the memorial hall policy. Brian?
Brian? How you guys doing?
Great now that you're here.
Well, these guys know, um, my name's Brian McHugh. I'm the supervisor event coordinator down here at the memorial hall. Um, well commissioners, the time has come for us to make some, some policy changes, changes, excuse me. Um, the city attorney has been working alongside with the, the city administration to make some minor adjustments. Uh, regarding the language that we have in our rental policy. This is gonna help uh, clarify which classification uh, an event falls under and it's also gonna prevent. The organization from skirting the policy and uh, using like a non, uh, nonprofit as loophole. Cause we, we don't wanna see that happen, you know? Um, we wanna classify things properly and not let the hall be taken advantage of. And there's basically uh, four different classifications. Um, class A's like a wedding reception banquet, um, birthday party, et cetera. Class B's nonprofit, they have to have a five oh one C three and the primary benefit goes to the nonprofit. And uh, not a non-third, uh, third party, of course. Class C's like SAT testing for high schools, et cetera. Uh, events that are approved by the city manager, of course, and class D's something special, kinda like uh, knee walla, you know? Um, in the auditorium, we are requesting that we have class A reduced from ten percent to five percent. This is something that's really need be, to happen some time ago and I've had a, a couple different. Promoters that called and as soon as uh, September, August and they, they had canceled. Um, wanting to come to our venue because they thought the ten percent was just outrageous. They, they didn't wanna have nothing to do with it. I mean. Could've had an Elvis in person there guys, I mean, would be. But the bottom line is, and mixed martial arts, I know, I wanted, take your pick. Bottom line is uh, the taxpayers have paid pretty pa- uh, pretty penny to, to, to make the upgrades up in the auditorium. And if we have to cut ten percent to five percent to book more events up there. I, and boost the local economy, I'm all for it and I hope you guys are too.
Go ahead.
Yeah, the question I had, I agree the ten percent is of gross ticket sales.
Yes.
Is pretty high. You know, when you look at, at going on the gross, that includes. The promoter's overhead and all his expenses too, so.
Right.
You know, you, you look at, at uh, that factor, you know.
It literally takes the icing off the cake.
Yeah, if you're trying to make, make money, I'm not for sure what. The promoter, what kind of margin he operates on, but the gamble of ticket sales to break even. And then on top of that, losing ten percent, you can start looking elsewhere for better deals. Uh, you know, even still five percent over gross ticket sales. Uh, I don't know how that cuts in to a margin. Have you talked to any other venues to see how they charge?
Absolutely. Some of them are just flat rate. Um, for example, the Brady Theater in Tulsa, it's ten thousand dollars to rent out that facility. Plus uh, cost of police presence and, you know, depending on what they have. Uh, but I've called up to the Granada and Pittsburgh Memorial and Chinook, I mean, you name it. They all take some portion, but not, not ten percent. Couple of them do five percent and I think one's just like two dollars regardless of how much tickets are, they're just, they take two dollars for the facility fee.
Two dollars?
Yeah.
We should start having our meetings there.
Yeah.
Two dollars a ticket?
That's, you're talking about per ticket.
Oh, thanks.
You're talking per ticket, right?
Per ticket, per ticket.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's a, that is another.
Jar and put it two dollar, maybe tip for the facility or something.
Yeah, it is, it doesn't do any good to have a, a venue to the. Uh, quality that memorial hall is and then you've priced yourself out of the market.
Absolutely.
So I think, you know, what I, what I saw, it looked like going in the right direction. My, my question is still, is five percent. An attractive rate for a promoter to wanna come here?
It's very comparable with uh, what I found with other venues. I mean, within two hundred mile radius, I just. Unless you guys wanna go lower.
Well, you know, similar sized town because the Brady in Tulsa, the magnitude of the people available to come. You know, I, I think Pittsburgh, the Bolus is in Iola, you know, Chinook. Comparing what they're doing is uh, more accurate where you're looking at the same population base. The same turnout, so promoter would, but you know, the Brady, uh, just. The vast number of people, you got more to draw from to come in. So what did you say Pittsburgh charged?
I believe they were two fifty and I'm not sure what, you, you brought up the Bolus. They're seven hundred fifty to rent out their, their auditorium. They only have seven hundred fifty seats. We got nineteen hundred fifty seats. I mean. Just seems like we could, little skim off the top is, do us good, but if it's just sitting up there collecting cobwebs, it's not. The way I look at it's the cash cow of the city. We, we, we're having events up there all the time and bringing people to town. It's gonna boost the economy significantly. People are gonna come down, stay the night, fill up, get something to eat, so on and so forth. I just wanna make it to where people wanna come here.
Sure, yeah, I understand. Um, it's a nice facility and, and it's just uh, underutilized. And this would give us a good opportunity to uh, to draw events in. That's basically why we're doing this, especially with all the upgrades that have been made. Um, this seems like a reasonable amount, five percent of the gross sales for tickets or five hundred dollars, whichever is greater. It didn't seem like an, an outlandish amount. Um, we can see um. What transpires of this, to see if we get more events that are interested in coming to the city and they're willing to. To use our facilities if this uh, opens the door for that.
And we hope so.
Yeah, on your class B uh, definition, it's the private functions of any nonprofit entity not open to the general public. What if there's a nonprofit entity, but they are open to the general public? Do they go into the class A category?
Well, that kinda is dictated if they have their five oh one C three or not and if, uh, we've had fundraisers here, um. We had a, a benefit concert and I mean. Granted, they're selling tickets to the doors, but it's all for a fundraiser and the primary focus went to uh, or the primary benefit went to the. Person they're having the benefit for, that was in the hospital, someone that broke his neck.
But what, it, it excludes a, a nonprofit entity. That is open to the general public in class B. So if I'm a nonprofit entity and I want to do a fundraiser and bring in the public. Then which category do I go into then? Am I in category A?
That might be something we have to take another look at and change some of the, the wording in the class B.
Yeah.
Because at that point, even though it's a nonprofit, it's a for-profit operation.
Yeah, even though the money doesn't go for profit, it goes to, like you said, a fundraiser for someone that was in the hospital.
If the, if the nonprofit is, it's kinda, that's just the way it's been. I just corrected the semantics. The way it's worded is if it's a five oh one C three, there's no distinction between open or not open to the general public.
Yeah.
But for some reason, the way it was, it's always been is if you're a nonprofit, but you're not a five oh one C three, there's a distinction. About whether it's open to the public or not open to the public and I honestly don't know why that's there. That's just the way it was.
Yeah.
From day one.
Yeah.
You'd have to ask the, and I don't know how that's interpreted by the staff.
Yeah. The wording seemed odd that if they're a nonprofit saying, you're gonna have it. But you can't invite or can't allow any public come in, or if you're a nonprofit, you know, who cares really?
It does seem a little strange and.
Hey, I think it's covering both though, because it says private functions of any nonprofit entity not open to the general public and then there's a semicolon. Functions conducted by nonprofit entities to have a five oh one C three status. So there, it's two different things.
Well.
No.
Isn't it?
Three status is an extra qualifier. Not all, very few nonprofits have five oh one C three status.
Okay.
I mean, the majority of them don't.
What status do they have?
They're not five oh one C three. Five oh one C three is a internal revenue code status.
Okay.
And, and, you know, but I, and I don't know how city staff has interpreted that, so I was reluctant to change that, but it's a good question. I don't know why they make a requirement that someone be five oh one C three, but on the other hand, nonprofit is an undefined term. You, you can say you're a nonprofit, who's gonna challenge it? So we added that up at the top. Where you're placed in the categories is in the discretion of the city manager, so we can make that call.
My only question is not open for general public. That, that seems like an oxymoron. If I'm gonna have an event. Then of course I'm gonna want people to come in. If I'm nonprofit trying to uh. Spread information, I wouldn't have it for myself and, you know, you've got two types, like you're saying, the nonprofit. That's not five oh one three C and you've got those that are, but. The redundant part is the not open for public.
I would say just functions of nonprofits. Don't believe out, open or not open to the general public, but maybe take the five oh one C three out of there. Or define nonprofit somehow. Define nonprofit as a five oh one C three entity or.
But we need, need some way to prove that they actually are a nonprofit group.
But the not open to pub, to the general public doesn't establish either thing.
Right.
It just. Doesn't seem to make sense.
I think it's supposed to cover non-commercial activities.
Yeah.
Any other thing I can think of is, you know, when they're having training, it's a hospital or something and they don't wanna open to the public, but. So I know we've had LaBette.
Like the healthcare.
Right, right.
You know, it's nonprofit, but then do they fall in class, because it's open to the public? Does that open to the public kick them out of class B to go to class?
That was class B and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But since it's open to the public, where does that put them? Are they still in class B or? If they're still in class B, then it's idle words that aren't necessary. Or if they are open to the public, then does it become a class one function? Just because they're open to the public. I guess what purpose are you trying to? Uh. Solve a problem by saying it's not open to the public?
I think we all agree with that. Why don't we just say private functions of any five oh one C three entity or nonprofit entity, period.
That's clear, that's easy to understand.
Well, if that's easy to do.
Yeah, and that was why I was trying to say on why it said, just that's simple.
I think that's cause it's always been there.
So say that again.
Yeah, just strike the not open to the general public from that.
Yeah, the first sentence where it says private functions of any, then insert five oh one C three entity or nonprofit entity, period. And delete the rest of that sentence. And then the last sentence stays in there. And if there's a dispute on whether something's nonprofit or not, that's be the city manager's call. That's the safety net.
And then we're leaving the last sentence under this class, the function must be primarily for the benefit of the nonprofit entity.
Right.
I think the only other thing on here was if there's any other cost incurred, like uh, we've had in the past, like a fire alarm that went off. And um, we got an outstanding bill. Well, I shouldn't say outstanding, but it, over five hundred dollars and. We just uh, proposed that the, the permittee, I have to pay for whatever cost that occurred during, during their stay here.
That was somebody intentionally?
No, 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 no. Fog machine, fog machine said it.
I was concerned I opened the door out there and turned the alarm off. I didn't wanna bill for five hundred dollars.
Yeah, me neither. You and me both.
Kelly, uh, could I get you to read that statement back that's been modified?
On class B.
On class B, yes please.
Private functions of any five oh one C three entity or nonprofit entity, under this class, the function must be primarily for the benefit of the nonprofit entity.
Thank you.
Is that correct, Joe?
It is if they say so.
Okay, any other, any other questions? Gary? Good? Leonard?
No.
Okay, so, um, do I have a motion?
I move to authorize modifications to the Memorial Hall policy and rental rates as recommended by the staff and the city attorneys. Addition, I guess.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you, Brian. All right, item G, um, consider First Amendment to the City Manager's Employment Agreement. All right, gentlemen, either one of you.
Are you asking for a discussion?
Yeah, any, yeah, any discussion from either one?
Not me.
Okay, okay. Do I have a motion?
I move to adopt the First Amendment to the City Manager's Employment Contract.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. All right. Reports, uh, Peter Pan Road Project Update.
Yeah, Sean's here if you have any specific questions. But these are just on here, kind of a formal, you've seen these reports before, especially the one on the state safety inspection. If you have any questions on that, there's no presentation really on it. Uh, but if you have any questions specifically about Peter Pan Road, it hasn't changed since the last update I gave you. Basically, they're looking to put out bids, uh, in March. If you have any specific questions, like, Sean is here.
On the previous project, the geometric, is it a geometric or?
Yes.
We never got the final change order on actually canceling out or where you went in and did the measurements, the difference between bid and actual materials. Has that been processed?
I thought it had, but I'll, I'll double check on that.
It seemed like it was like, was it eighty thousand difference in bid or?
I, I believe so. It's been a while since I've looked at those numbers. I know there was a significant deduct, and if you recall, there was that city funded portion in the middle. I'll, I'll just after you.
Yeah, I don't recall the change order coming back to the commission. Was a contractor that did that interested in bidding on this work also?
Yes, they're very interested in this project. Uh, that is B and B, uh, construction from St. Paul.
And, um, have any other con, contractors been contacted in advance of March bid day?
Yes, they have, and, uh, there is a pretty significant interest. I think, looking back at the ADA project, that's a pretty intense type construction project. There's a lot of tight constraints and some contractors would rather build the bigger road, which is actually a little easier and faster, and, uh, that's why I think we only got, but the one, one bid.
The ramps you tie up a lot of your time.
They do.
And there's better work to do than build ramps all over an area.
They do.
But, you know, when we're looking at, at that project, the cost and it's nice to see more than one bid come in where we can really know what the market is.
I agree, I agree.
The, the length of this will end up being six hundred and sixty feet, is that right?
Yeah, I did, I didn't bring the exact, um, the plans with me, but I, I believe that is correct as well, an additional six hundred and sixty feet.
And as far as, once this goes out to bid and, and, um, we pick a contractor for this, what's, what's the estimated timeline as far as starting the project and, and an end date?
It's actually a good time to bid it, so it should be completed this year as well. We're in the process of finalizing, obtaining right away. Those are really the last three things, there's three things that have to go into K dot for the, uh, to be officially let us bid it. It's a right away form, a utility form, and an environmental form that, you, all the work regarding utilities has been done long ago by the city and by others, and environmental is the same way. It's the right away's taking a little bit of time.
Okay, all right, thank you, Sean.
And I don't recall, your contract for this, was it an extension of the other one? Or was this a new contract with the city? I don't remember seeing figures and.
I'm going to have to look, to be honest.
And even the ADA project, have we authorized a contract on?
I'll have to look on both of those, Commissioner, if we have a, a contract or if it's an.
I should have waited till the project was done and said, thank you.
If it was a, a part of our on-call, how we did that, I'll, I'll look back and see. I'm not, I'm not for sure.
Is there a written on-call contract?
Yes, there is.
Okay.
And then, quite often we'll give a, a limit to this, for those certain tasks on that on-call, so it.
Yeah, because we, with the size of that project, we wouldn't want to do it hourly.
Right.
Yeah, that's quite a lot of work, forty-nine pages hourly.
Right, yeah, it, it has a limit to what, I'm sure, I know there's a limit to what, uh, the, the fee is and all that. I'll look and see if it is in, it's a standalone contract if it was done as part of the, part of the on-call.
Yeah, be interesting to see the on-call contract too.
This really doesn't relate to Peter Pan Road project, but while you're here, I believe at the last meeting we had talked about the wastewater project. And there was, we were inquiring about what the status of that was and, and there was, uh, I don't know whether it was some documentation or something that, that you were looking at or is, there was something that was a holdup on that?
Yeah, the, the loan, we're, the loan, uh, process is, is a three-part process, and we went through the environmental review, which is the harder part of that. So we're working on finalizing that third part and getting that into the state, and then they'll, your, the plans for the Lake View list is already been approved, so that one will bid pretty quick when the loan documents go in. And then I think the other thing that has been designed is that second phase of Basin Five. So those are essentially on the shelf. And then there's some additional money that the commission would, I, I assume those two are still the priority commission. And there's, there's some additional money too in that, that the, there has to be discussion on what you want to use that money for.
Okay.
So I.
Were you asking about the new loans submitted or the projects?
Pardon?
What were you asking about the loan or the new?
Yeah, the new, the finishing the loan application for, uh, I believe it's the two point three million dollars.
Right, and, and the status of the project too. I mean, I, it was unclear what it was, what the holdup was on that, so I, I was.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're finalizing that, uh, Phase Three of the loan application right now. So hopefully that will go in by the end of the month, and then we can, uh, the city should be getting a loan agreement to, uh, consider for improvement.
For the full amount or just for the project?
It's for the full amount, uh, of the two point three million. So then I, I know a portion of that is accounted for in those two projects, but there is a, an amount that the city's going to have to decide what, what their next priority on the wastewater system is.
All right.
And you, and you don't have to use that full amount if you only want to do those two projects. That's, that's an, an option as well.
Is there a carryover, like the money that was remaining on the first loan? Can that combine with a project in the second loan or is there a, are they a separation of the two?
I believe when that was finalized out, there was an amendment that deleted that, and the state, the state preferred to do it that way. That loan was getting kind of old and they just wanted to close that out.
Okay. Okay.
All right, gentlemen, anything else?
No, thank you.
Sean, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sean.
B, state safety inspection.
Again, there's no presentation. You've seen the report, just if you had any questions, it's, we, you know, we put out a media release as well on it. There's a report in the paper, so it's just, again, on the list.
All right, um, moving along, uh, city managers' comments.
I have no comments.
No comments, all right. Commissioner comments, gentlemen?
I also have no comments.
The past few times we had talked about it, it kind of came up again, looking at our, our projects bidding, uh, the ADA walk and, um, the, uh, Phase One at City Hall, uh, looking at some policies regarding award of contracts, bid standards, uh, contracting, uh, you know, with consultants. Like the county has a, in their policy, one of the elements is giving local contractors, a preference if they're within a certain percent of the low bid, then the contract is, uh, able to be awarded to them. And, you know, we had talked about in, in the past some procurement policies and, uh, minimum bid standards in, in these, and that, you know, as time keeps going on, maybe it's time we, we look at, at some standards that we can adopt as, uh, uh, standard practice.
We have, I mean, we have a draft, uh, procurement policy now that we're just tightening up some loose ends, uh, that we've been, it's, it's a, it's a, that's a, that's the key one of all the financial policies we've been looking at. So, uh, we're, we're nearly finished with that, but it does have in there, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we have that local preference as well. I mean, that's, that's a typical thing you see.
So that'll come to the commission soon to look at, okay. Cause you know, the, with the, uh, like contracting with the consultants, whether we put, we'll look at limits for on-call contracts are really geared for small incidental, low scope work. When you get into a project of any magnitude, then you want to have an agreement upfront of, of where the expenses and all of them, always execute them before the work. So, uh, those are some things that'll help. Okay, the other item in the, um, administrative report that talked about the ADA transitional plans, are those, those are done, or what was the scope on, on that? Are we going to get a submit on those two or?
Yeah, I'm not sure what you're asking on the transition plan. I mean, it's going to be coming, the transition plans are going to be coming, uh, what, the February, second, second meeting in February?
Usually, uh, staff needs to look at some timelines and some priorities, and then we'll bring it to you guys for your review and timelines and priorities.
It wasn't reevaluating buildings, was it?
Uh, it's, the only buildings we've already kind of talked to you about. But it's mainly just looking at all the different, it covers, there's fifty-three different items. There's sidewalks, there's, I mean, it's airport issues at the airport. It is how I was trained to do a tr, transition plan and the things, the training I went through to do it, using the help of, uh, to get estimates from the engineers and stuff like that. It's similar to what we talked about at the last commission meeting. It's a, uh, you know, Excel format spreadsheet. It defines what the issue is, what the ADA correction is, and how we're correcting it. Uh, we put a estimated cost of what those corrections are, and then there's a priority and a timeline to, that the commission will eventually establish to make those repairs.
Yeah, I wasn't for sure the scope of the work that we weren't revisiting the ones that were already identified in the Department of Justice.
Yeah, that is, I don't call it an addendum, but that's at the back of what these are. We've went to all of our facilities and done an assessment. And then what was done in twenty seventeen is at the end, because we're still under those agreements.
But you're doing the facilities that hadn't been audited?
Right.
Yeah, okay, kind of filling in the gap.
Right.
On our, our condemnations, um, it seems like we're missing some of the structures that are in worse condition than what we've condemned. Like the house that, uh, the northeast, northeast corner of Myrtle and Seventeenth, it's adjacent to two oh eight North Seventeenth. It's got windows out and, you know, far worse condition, but it's not being reviewed. We're, if we're going to address blight, there's a lot of them that are obviously in worst case than what we've reviewed.
I totally agree with you, Commissioner, and we have a committee that is meeting next Wednesday, made up of staff, citizens, uh, and our goal is, it's part of the strategic plan, beautification, uh, condemnation, and putting a process and a system together. We will be bringing those to you. I'm sure Craig can get you further information how this process is going to work, but we, our goal is to get the condemnation, because Don and I feel like we get a complaint where we're here, get another complaint where we're there, we're just jumping all over the place. Let's get a process and figure out how we're going to do this in an organized way. But we also want to figure out a way how we can save some houses. I mean, and save our stock.
Evaluating, I think we've talked in the past.
And April's very much involved in this, and so we.
So a committee is like an ad hoc committee to make recommendations is being formed?
Right, yeah, that's, uh, you know, as, as Dave mentioned, this is part of our strategic plan. Under beautification, uh, you know, there's key initiatives that were established, and then we had to take those key initiatives and set some action steps. And part of the beautification, Dave's put together this goal, action step, uh, is to put that process, develop that process in place, just using a, a, a committee, as Dave mentioned, made up of both city staff and, and citizens. So it's just kind of an ad hoc to review and help set priorities, not just from city staff, but from the community as well. But to meet that major, meet that goal in the, under the beautification and economic development as well.
Some of the, most of the committees in the past have been under the administration of the, the commission, and the commission has selected and appointed the members. So surprised we're getting committees formed outside.
It's just an informal thing right now, you know, we, they haven't even put together any, they haven't even met yet. They're just, just kind of talking about, uh, that process. I mean, I think committees are, it's not something like the planning commission or something, or some, or even the tree board. It's not that formal, uh, and it, it, there's no timeline. It may dissolve after a, a time, a period, but.
Input, I'm just looking for people to give us input, look at the codes that we're using. Help us, I mean, yeah, and help us so that I can bring you guys something to, shows you that, how we're going to attack the issues we have with condemned houses, vacant houses and all those. So that's what I'm trying to do, is get more input.
Yeah, because, you know, we've had the task force for the city hall and task force for the community-based strategic plan. We've had this system a few times before. Let's see, the, the house, oh, um, streets. I noticed the repairs that were done on Main Street, uh, West Main between Ninth Street, West Main between Ninth and Tenth, they're starting to fail again, and at one time, Sean had a, we looked at trying to get a grant for redoing that block, chances are slim, but it, it looks like the base is getting worse, that we're having more, more problems, that even patches are failing, so has that portion of the roadway been looked at a schedule for replacement or?
We did reapply for that stretch of roadway again in the last grant round, and that wasn't awarded, that, that project wasn't awarded, I did hear recently, there is going to be another grant round this year for KDOT, so it was, it was a very expensive project, too, because there was some property acquisition on a corner of the way KDOT wanted to do that project, but maybe something we can take another look at to see if, maybe there's a way to, to shrink it to fit better in KDOT's grant program, where it's not quite, as I recall, it was over a million dollars in city funds to do that one, so it wasn't a-
Well, my concern is that roadway is deteriorating rapidly, and I think we looked at it, it's gonna have to be like the portion west of Tenth Street, a full base replacement. We can't wait till we get a grant to address it because it's gonna go away, our only other option if we don't get a grant is we have to have the funds to do it, or look at funding sources to do it, now's the time to start getting serious about preparing our funds, particularly going into budget, that we don't want to get caught like the west section of West Main and, and not be able to address that, so as we're, we're looking at, that's what I didn't know where, that was, the geometric was pretty extreme, but that's gonna require us to purchase that corner business, too.
Correct.
So if we had the option of just replacing the roadway with the layout that it is now, might be affordable, but we're gonna have to do something.
Yeah, I mean, if we did it on our own, we'd definitely have to look at shrinking that project, I remember when we went, met with the state and talked about the grant application, we met at that corner and talked about it, and as you know, we were awarded the grant for the white topping out of Peter Pan Road, but when we looked at that section, it was just so expensive, not only for the city, but KDOT just, you know, said this'd be tough to fund, and obviously, they didn't do that, but so if we had to take it on ourselves, I don't know how we'd shrink it, but it still would be very expensive, I mean, as you know, one of our goals is to increase the amount we have for streets every year, and that's what, this, this current year was more than we had last year, at two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand, I think, this year, but that, you know, that wouldn't even touch this project, and, depending on how you shrink it, I guess, but, I mean, a large project, then you're looking, dare I say, borrowing money for it, but, but that's a, my understanding is it's, when you, 'cause you're talking, like you said, full reconstruction.
Yeah, and if we don't-
And I don't know if there's even, there's utilities under that, but if you do that, you know, total reconstruction, you look at the utilities and do them, too, at that time, so that's the-
We gotta start planning, we gotta start preparing with money.
That's why I say, our goal is to increase, and we have, we have a long list of places, but that's West Main Street, and I mean, that's a critical, that's a ma- major arterial for our city.
It's gonna be right next to the brewery.
It's just, talk full reconstruction.
Yeah.
Four travel lanes and turn lane.
You mentioned the white top on West Main, has, have we got a schedule to start on it, or?
No, I haven't seen anything, Sean maybe has seen something. No, I, I think the city has the agreement to sign, or maybe you have already. Yeah, we've done that, yeah. And then it's, that, that basically gets it programmed for KDOT, it's a, I believe that's a 2020 project, but KDOT's fiscal year is July to July, so it still could be in the city's 2019 fiscal years, so.
Okay, that was the last of my questions.
All right, Gary?
I just have a, a couple of questions, in looking at, it was almost a year ago, the January twenty-fifth, 2018 commission meeting, when we were talking about condemnations, we seemed to be in, in agreement about a spreadsheet tracking condemnations as to, as where we're at in the process, and everyone seemed to think that that was a pretty good idea to follow through, and I think that's probably the last we've heard of it.
We have a spread, I mean-
Do you have something available?
Davis, we can certainly give that to you, but Dave, in, 'cause there's, again, a long list of, he's out there, and we only have so much money each year, but they've put that together, so can certainly share that with you.
Okay, that would be great. And have we received the plans and specs for Phase One of the 1916 City Hall, Phase One?
Yeah, we've, we have a hard copy, if you can come down and look at them, of course, you know, they've been out to bid, you can look at them online, I can send you that link, I think I did, I think I did send that link, but maybe not, it was, but it was in the notice, but I'll send that link to you.
Okay, and then my other question was, I had a citizen approach me earlier today, and he was wanting to know where we were on the leaf pickup schedule, and I believe I told him we were working in Zone Ten?
No, we're in Twelve now.
In Twelve now, okay, I told him that had been a couple of weeks ago, and that we would-
Stepped out.
Definitely be getting into his part of town and even my, our part of town where I live at.
I keep asking, so I, that's why I know they're in Twelve.
Okay, okay, well, he was concerned, and I said, "Well, I, I think they're getting close to our areas, so just, just have a little patience, and you should see some results here down the road," so.
Yeah.
Yeah, he was, he was concerned, 'cause he thought it was gonna be December and-
Yeah, well, they got behind, you know, yeah, we put out that we were a couple of weeks behind at least, and we're trying to catch up, and there were other things that, you know, sometimes when the snow flies, you gotta stop doing leaf, things like that, we're in interruptions, and so we're, we're, we're almost there, yes, Zone Twelve, we're, I think was scheduled for like the eighth of January, so we're a little behind.
Okay, all right, thank you.
But we're in Zone Twelve, the last one, the largest one, but the last one.
The largest one, great, that's good news to hear. Next on the agenda, public concerns, do we have anyone, none? Okay, next item would be executive session, acquisition of property, and I move that we recess for an executive session for discussion of possible acquisition of real estate for city and public purposes pursuant to the preliminary discussion on acquisition of real estate, exception KSA seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen B six, the open meeting, how much time are we gonna need for this?
Seven forty-five would be fifteen minutes.
Fifteen minutes, okay. The open meeting will resume at seven forty-five, is that right? Seven forty-five in the veterans room, and that'll include commissioners, Craig, Jeff, Sean, and Kelly.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, at seven forty-five, the meeting is back in session, and there was no action taken, at this time we move to adjournment, do I have a motion for adjournment?
So what?
Second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Thank you.